It is in regards to our budget and it is a work session. The commissioners have the right to ask any questions they desire to ask about the budget. If there is a question that concerns a department head and a department budget, then you can call on the department head for that information. However, this will not be open to the general public for questions. We've already had two public hearings and so today we're going to try to settle between the commissioners what we desire to be in this final budget. Some adjustments have already been made and Ms. Minner, I believe, has a handout for each of you concerning those changes.
First sheet that you're getting is a list of recommendations that were approved by the Finance Committee on June 4th. As you will see, at the bottom of that sheet, it was not balanced at that point and the Finance Committee had directed me to come up with some other changes that are on the second sheet for your consideration today to possibly balance the budget back after those recommendations. The first handout with the recommendations, we'll start with expenditure increases. The Finance Committee approved an additional appropriation to CCC and their current expense line item of $160,000. We received notice from the city of Sanford, right as the budget was being finalized, that they would be going up on the rent of the city building that we use for emergency management. That totals $3,552 additional dollars as needed in next year's budget. Finance Committee approved additional $5,000 for Haven appropriation, increase of the Johnston Lee Community Action appropriation of $2,000. The Committee approved increasing register of deeds salary to $60,000, which would incur additional $4,530 to that budget, an increase in the sheriff's budget of $84,437 to add the crime scene investigator and related costs related to that position. They also approved increasing the COLA from 2.5% to 3.0%, which will cost approximately $71,000. The total expenditure increases totaled $330,519. Reductions that were approved by the Finance Committee on Monday included reducing the Lee County Schools' current expense appropriation by $67,303, which is a half percent decrease, reduce the Health Department vehicle appropriation by $30,000, which is equivalent to two passenger vehicles that they had requested based on our vehicle replacement policy. The next adjustment was to reduce the jail salaries by $5,918. At that point, we prepared the budget, the paper performances were not finalized for the jail and thus, once those were, that's the additional money that would need to be reduced. Reduce the Sandhills Mental Health appropriation by $2,000, reduce IT by $50,625 to move to IT Support Analyst. And then the Finance Committee recommended removing the paper performance funding of Total expenditure reductions totaled $187,466, which left us additional expenses at this time of $143,053. That's basically the summary of what the Finance Committee is recommending. On the next sheet, the items that can be considered for to possibly balance this, if you look under Revenue Increases, it is recommended that you increase the fund bounce appropriation by $28,840 to cover the vehicle for the crime scene investigator. We had done the same type of funding on the two vehicles for the two recommended sheriff's deputies, so that would fall in line with what was already recommended. The next revenue increase is to transfer the purchase of three Sheriff Patrol cars, which totals $67,440 from operational funding to funding from the fund bounce appropriated. Spentiture reductions that are recommended, reduce the funding for tax consulting services by $17,541. That is the contract that we are paying, the amount we are reducing, not only at the time we would continue the contract with Mr. Edmondson and the Tax Department, and knowing you have now posted that, felt like we might could reduce that somewhat. We also are reducing IT by $14,232 and in funding the secondary storage network. And then the item that is there in bold is a definite reduction that will take place when we finalize this budget or prepare the budget ordinance, and that's reducing the funding for the generator Quick Connects and emergency management by $15,000. I reported to the Finance Committee that the pricing that we got for the Quick Connect at Southern Lee had come in better than was anticipated, so I went back with Mr. Griffin and discussed it with him, and we agreed that based on the pricing we got at Southern Lee, we felt that we could reduce the price, the cost for the Quick Connects at East and Wesley by $15,000 to the current budget. So those are the items, and those adjustments would total the $143,053 that we are out of bounds from the Finance Committee recommendations.
So these are the only changes in this proposed budget book?
From that proposed budget book, those are the only changes that have been recommended at this time by the Finance Committee.
Well, I guess my first question is, let's take a look at the sheriff's budget, because I know they were requesting four deputies, one crime scene investigator, and a car, so where are we with all of that?
The recommended budget included two deputies, and then we've added, the Finance Committee recommended adding the crime scene investigator, and that includes all the related necessary equipment.
Okay, so the two deputies were going to start on July 1st?
And the crime scene investigator.
And the crime scene investigator.
What do you like to appropriate for July 1st, to start when I get hired?
I understand. What I would like to propose is, rather than having the patrol deputies effective July 1st, there's a way I think we can get all four of them, the two of them starting on October 1st, and the other two on April 1st of next year, and it will be the same amount of money. Actually... I just want to make sure that my calculations are made with the right assumptions. So, in our current budget, we've got two patrol deputies, effective July 1st, that we've appropriated, an amount of $87,395. And so that's for 12 full months, and monthly per deputy would be $36,40. Now, if we, instead of hiring those two or appropriating those two for July 1st, if we take two patrol deputies, appropriated them starting on October 1st, and then the other two starting April 1st, that gives the sheriff's department his four patrol deputies, and the cost is the same.
What does it give the county? What does it give the county?
Why does it...
This board, what does it give us in terms of cost?
What you had already allocated in the budget, you were going to spend for him, for the two patrol deputies.
We need an additional $44,960 for vehicles.
I was going to bring up that include two additional vehicles.
Okay, so we need how much for vehicles?
Another 44, if you end up adding four deputies, you would need another $44,960 for vehicles.
Is that including computer tape?
No, does not include the computers, doesn't include the insurance.
There's a package that has to be covered when you hire one of these.
Well, then, I think my goal would be to go through this budget and find the $44,000 that we can take from something else.
Well, actually, my position is that you've had the same amount of time that we've had to go through and do your findings. And I'm actually amazed that we're still having workshops. On May 14th, we sent out, the committee sent out a request for any proposed cuts or changes. Did you get a copy of that? You didn't submit anything until the date.
I think it's probably appropriate that we, instead of submitting things, I would like to, there are a lot of questions I have, so I think it's more appropriate that we have a work session where we can ask questions and go through the budget in detail. You know, I find it highly unusual with a 60, almost a $63 million budget, that we have not had more work sessions to go through this. I'm a little uncomfortable with a Finance Committee of three pretty much determining what the budget's going to be.
We don't determine what the budget's going to be, we make recommendations.
I know.
Well, then, we don't determine what it's going to be, we make recommendations.
And we're here to ask questions and dig through it. I'm not comfortable just taking this and not being able to go through all this. I have lots of questions.
After...
Lots of time.
After the budget work session that we had, we opened up any questions that any member had, any comments that any member had, and it was my determination at that time that we had satisfied its questions. Then we heard from the sheriff, we heard from other department heads, and the Finance Committee had gone back and tried to satisfy some of the requests that had been made and were made at our public hearings. So, I agree with Mr. Reeves, we were somewhat in a quandary, because we didn't have the feeling that everybody was satisfied with the budget after the first work session.
I guess I was making a faulty assumption that this board would act like previous boards and we have several work sessions on the budget.
Well, now, I don't think, if you go back to the previous boards, they had several work sessions, and of course, I was not on the board at that particular time.
You were on the board last year and the year before that, so where are you getting information from? We almost, for one thing, we saw...
I guess I'm thinking, what I read in the newspapers with the...
Well, it's not the same thing as what happens. We didn't actually have very many finance meetings in the past. We would get the budget out, we would all go through it and work through it, whatever work session that we had.
And you had a work session on Monday, so we're supposed to have all of our questions answered today. There's, you know...
Well, you've been given the results of our work session on Monday in these two documents right here. That way it'll happen.
But I question, you know, for example, this is pennies in the budget, but I cannot feel comfortable about spending taxpayer money for the Johnston Lee Community Action. You know, you're wanting to increase it by 2,000, that's $14,000. I would say that there's a lot of taxpayers who are not comfortable with their tax dollars being spent to renovate somebody's home or weatherize it. You know, there's lots of items there that I think, if we go through here, that's my whole point. I'm not comfortable just taking something here and saying, "This is it or nothing."
I think the state's making us do that in regards to that home you're talking about. I mean, we've got to, that's got to be settled. I mean, that, whether, I mean, the home you're talking about, are you talking about the...
This is the Johnston Lee Harney Community Action, the one that I addressed at the work session then. And for $2,000, because the need was there. These people have lived in this county a long, long time, and yet, as they've gotten older, they cannot fend for themselves as well as they used to. So, eventually, yes, sometimes their homes are going to run down, some, the weatherization, the stripping around the doors, the stripping around the windows and things of this nature. They go in and do different things to help educate those folks that do not know exactly how to save, with energy efficient bulbs, with things related to, you know, the heating system. If they have a bad roof or something like this, if they have a bad floor, they come in and they take care of that to keep them from having to suffer an injury.
I'm not denying that these aren't really worthwhile projects. I'm not comfortable with spending Lee County taxpayer dollars to do that, and I would venture to say that most taxpayers in this county, I heard loud and strong what Ms. Lyons said at our first public hearing on the budget, and there's a lot of people who feel that way, and, you know, that's just my opinion. I'm not comfortable spending taxpayer dollars that way.
This program's been in effect a long time. I've been on that board, Ms. Shep, for seven years, soon to be seven years, and I report back to this board everything that goes on. And I can sit here and I can bring this entire board, the work that goes on down there, you might not understand it, just like you didn't the night that you went with me, and then the very next day resigned from that board. That's fine and good, but I feel it's necessary to help take care of the people in this county that really cannot take care of themselves so far as little things like this. I don't have a problem of coming before the board and telling them everything about what Johnston Lee Harney Community Action does, and it doesn't just stop there.
I, like I say, I think it's a good program. I'm not comfortable allocating taxpayer dollars to that.
Your point is well taken. Moving on.
One of the...
Are you comfortable with the money we're giving the temple here? I haven't heard you mention it before, I'm asking.
I have.
So, it's okay for the arts, but not for survival, for the need?
I think, I look at that as part of the economic development. Part of it, but I think that...
Okay, okay. And we're not moving ahead, please. Move on.
Well, am I going to have a chance to ask my questions on this budget, or...
That's it, what do you have to go?
Okay, under Administration, on page 47, in the General Funds Act. We've gone from a staffing of two, four years ago now, to six, and I realize that Mr. Hoyle was moved from Legal Land to here, so what was the reason basically for a 50% jump there? I wasn't on the previous board, so I'm not sure why I'm staffing. I'll go with the full-time equivalents.
Right, in the past, Kenny Cole was, once he was moved to Administration as Assistant County Manager, he was still being split between their Public Works and Solid Waste. This year, they moved him completely to Public, to Administration. Mr. Hoyle was moved a year ago, combined the county attorney budget into the administration budget, so that is the difference between the 5.25 and the 6. And to go back to the two, you have added, let's see if I can go back, you added Kenny Cole's Assistant County Manager, picked up 25% of his time. We also picked up Lisa Price full-time, and then the position was added, that's now Administrative Assistant in the manager's office, which originally sitting out front and assisting on Mr. Hoyle's work.
Three of these were the recommendation of the county manager, former, former county manager.
Well, I think, you know, not to do anything with it in this budget, but I think, you know, moving into the next year, we really need to take a look, because for a small county, that seems like a lot of headcount, you know, and I just, I just think we need to take a serious look at that.
Well, we've got a new county manager coming on board, and we don't know what kind of operation that he wants in Administration, so once he gets here, we can find out more about him.
I would hope you agree on that.
Well, even if he does, some of it will change, some won't. Some will be recommendations to this board, and some will be independent decisions made by the manager. And they'll continue to be that way, because we operate from a management standpoint.
Okay, on page 51, I guess I just want to know about the $175,000 Automated Time and Attendance System.
And we are looking at the possibility of adjusting our payroll. We currently operate off a manual system. We key off time sheets, we deal with a stack of time sheets every month about like this that have to be manually checked. Our payroll cuts off, varies from department to department. We have to have time sheets in our office by the 18th to pay on the 25th, however we pay through the end of the month. So, we have a liability from the 25th to the 31st for people to possibly quit after they've gotten their pay. If they don't have vacation or sick leave for us to go back and get, we're stuck. We can, Mr. Hoyle can try to track them down, but a lot of times, we don't get the money back. It's happened a few times since I've been here, but that's just part of it. The other part is, we're cutting time sheets off, and they're due to us the 18th, different departments cut them off different times because of the number of employees they have and they have to check. Social Service usually has to cut theirs off at least a week earlier than other departments. So then, we have to go back and forth between months of time sheets. Sheriff's Department is on a different time scale than we are, so we inevitably have to go back, because their comp time is computed over so many hours or so many days. And so we always have to, staff has to go back and double check the month before to make sure that the hours come out right and see when other people have comp time. Our comp time is all manual, and we are looking at moving to an automated system, whereas the employees will either clock in via web-based system, time clock in a few areas, or by phone, for our recreation workers and some of the other workers who don't come in straight into an office. We are looking at being able to have a system that will allow that if a department head person doesn't show up in a department in a key position, say, front desk switchboard, that, say, supervisor comes in at 10 minutes to 8, the person's not there, doesn't show up by 5 after 8, the supervisor can be automatically notified by email that they need to get somebody else down there. They will help us...
Pretty much to automate the payroll and...
I think that the system probably will pay for itself in time.
Long overdue, wait on it.
I believe it's a system similar to what the hospital has.
The one we are currently looking at is, but we will look at other systems also before final decisions made. It's my understanding that Scotland County, where Mr. Crumpton is coming from, has used a different system, and we will go back and look at that. When I was not aware of that system at the time we started looking, so we will explore our options.
Web-based systems?
This will be web-based, along with time clock and phone entry. And not every employee uses a computer, and we have, our lab or rec employees, you know, report straight to GEMs, and we have to have a way for them to be able to clock in and out of the system.
Now, will this come back to the board before we handle it?
Yes, sir. Because it will be a contract in excess of $20,000.
Will it come back to us?
There's a question I have. With the Colts, it says, "We're purchasing seven vans." Is that in addition, or are we trading out some, or...
That is, I believe they're all replacement vans. Don't think they're adding to their fleet, and the majority of that, all but 10% of that is paper statement.
10% matches off is what the transportation system makes.
I guess my concern is, I've, you know, been down by the sheriff's office several times, or gone to the courthouse, and I see maybe six or seven vans in there, just sitting there all the time. Maybe it's time of day I'm going through there, so I just didn't think we would be purchasing seven in addition to what we have. I do have a question here on the full-time equivalents for the Colts. There's four. When you take a look down at the expenditures for personnel, you know, that's $413,677. That's about $103,419 for FTE.
That is just our full-time people. We do not include this year our part-time employees in that. We could not go back and get the history in time to complete this document of our part-time positions, so that is just strictly your full-time people.
Was that the way that we report all these other departments too, like Fire Marshal and...
Right, that, actually, instead of full-time, it should be our permanent equivalents. Those are our permanent positions, not the temporary positions.
They reduced their permanent down from five to four.
Last year.
How many part-time do we have, except still looks large to me for personnel costs?
Well, Colts, with the money for...
It's the 100%.
Self-supporting. Self-supporting, so this is not money that we're going to give them. They contract with agencies that they transport for, plus the public ridership have to pay a fare.
So they're self-supporting?
Right. Always have been.
Personnel definitely may, based on need.
Do you actually have any employers who are paying vouchers to county whip there?
Yes, ma'am. I don't remember the exact number. I can get that for you if you would like, or ask the statements to get that to me.
I don't know that I need to get it, I'm just curious. I thought it was one of our goals to ask the county whip if we get that. I guess my concern here, you know, is this $44,960, the extra that we need for the vehicles for those deputies, so somehow or other, you know, I'd like to be able to get that in there.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the Finance Committee.
Well, you have our recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
This increase for CCC, $160,000, what figure did you write, did you pick out a boot or what? Kick out of the boot, or?
It was actually the base that they originally had. They had like 210,000 as their reserve. The same as the school had the fund balance, they try and maintain one. They were put in a position where they were down to a point where they had to use 160,000 of that money on reserve.
You're saying they asked for that increase?
Yes, they, and they should have received, they should have received it.
That's what I need to know. And our schools asked to be cut, you know?
Well, I don't know if they asked to be cut, but everybody should feel some pain in this work session.
Evidently, the college didn't feel any, and could put 160,000 back in their budget.
Well, if they spent 160,000, they only broke even.
It replaced money in the day.
Still not any pain there.
The pain has already been experienced by the loss of 160,000. We didn't, it really wasn't in there.
What is this?
You had an order. If anybody wants to approach the commissioner, we need to get permission.
I'm sorry. I want to ask that you start having a deputy down here.
All right, any other questions?
With the register deeds, I thought that they made more with their deed transfer tax to cover their expenses than their actual expenses were. Is that not the case?
Are you referring to Adam in?
On this expenditure increase.
The 4530.
Right, but that excess revenue is going to cover other expenses in the budget. So-
Pull the excess revenue from that account to put it back into our general fund?
All the revenues from the register deeds go into the general fund. So any of their budget is more than covered by the revenues they bring in. So those excess revenues have gone to cover these other expenditures of the rest of the general fund. So if you increase the register deeds budget, you've got to come up with revenues to cover the other items when you shift that revenue to cover them.
And the reason for the increase in salary for the register deeds is the fact that our register deeds is far out of line and is far out of line salary-wise than surrounding counties. So this is not going to bring her up really to the top.
Mid-range.
Brings her up to the bottom.
Mid-range.
And she's doing a lot more work now because of the land that's being transferred and whatever, the building that's going on.
Any other questions?
I had some questions on social services. And not budgetary questions, but they're kind of questions on checks and balances.
Have any things to do with the budget that we're discussing today?
Indirectly, yes. You know, we have a $12 million expenditure, 12 million, 12.2.
It's a combination of operational expenses and program expenses-
Correct.
That figure you just gave.
Concerns I've had and have heard from others is that in light of the fact that we have a large number of people who, what I would like to call multi-identities, multiple documented workers in our community, I'm just curious what type of systems we have in social services that can counter the fraud and abuse that is generated by that? And what type of investigative programs have we have within social service to identify this?
I have two fraud investigators, if you're asking what we have in place. Now, of course, we have online verifications in place. You know, if someone comes in and presents himself here to make an application for assistance, produces this piece of evidence, you know, their social security card, you know, then we have, we can go in, have online verifications verifying that is the good number of, that it belongs to the person that's indicated, you know, that their name is this. So we've got lots of online verification. I have two fraud investigators. We had three up until probably about four years ago. And then the state cut some of the funding, so I, you know, only have two now. And they do lots of things like, you know, if someone comes in and makes an application and the worker takes all the information, but things just don't seem to click. You know, they do what we call an upfront investigation. They actually go out and they make some home visits, and they make some calls and stuff like that. And then they come back and let us know that the information that they're finding is exactly what the client reported. Then sometimes it's on the back end. Sometimes it comes because someone called and said, reported this. Somebody's working somewhere, they hadn't reported it to you, and then we go from there. But I do have two positions.
How much do you say?
One of those investigators that you had, won the state award for being an outstanding fraud investigator in the whole state, is that correct?
The person's no longer here, they don't- Met and worked, yes.
But we do have good investigation.
How much have we saved?
I can get you that.
That would be interesting.
We track it with savings, and we track it with upfront investigations.
Is there a prosecution rate that you have? I don't know, I've never seen anything in the paper.
I can.
Commissioner Smith, with all due respect, those are procedural matters that maybe should be taken up with the social services board.
Well, it does relate to the budget in regards to how much are we-
I agree.
Brenda, I do have a question. With our $3 million for Medicaid, do we send that money into the state and they spend it? Or how, how's that work?
That 3 million, or I think it may be 3.1, will appropriate that amount of money. And it, you know, is here. And then each month, we receive what is called a electronic transfer notification. So Raleigh notifies us that they're, you know, they're going to take a portion of our money in the amount, you know, that certain amount of money, whatever our portion was for that month. And then they notify, they notify us what that amount is. Then, you know, when they actually take it out, we reconcile things to make sure that they took out the right amount of money that's on the finance side. Then my folks upstairs look at what they were supposed to take out. And then we actually have an expense report, and we look to make sure that they did take out, you know, the correct amount. So in essence, the money goes to Raleigh, Raleigh pays out all the medical providers. Now, I did pull for you, you know, a report, and I have it laying back there that would show you, you know, by the month or year-to-date, what was spent on each type of unit, meaning, you know, long-term care, CAP, emergency room, health department, stuff like that.
Well, this again is a procedural thing. And I would suggest that if any commissioner has a question or wants explanation, such as we're talking about right now, that you go directly to the department head on a one-on-one basis to get this information, whether it be social services, health, or whatever department.
But I'd be, Mr. Smith, I'd be more than happy to set up meetings with, you know, each one of my departments, so you can, you know. You spent a little time with me, you know, prior to the election.
That's one of my goals for next year. We've got to get the public involved because they see that 7 cents of their tax rate is going to Medicaid, and we have absolutely no control over it.
We've worked as hard as we can with the state and through the state organization.
Okay, we're going to take these a couple charter buses with some high-rate taxpayers going up to Raleigh, I don't know. We've got to get the public involved.
Any other questions? Yeah, I hear most of them, we're in the hearing.
Are you going to pick up the issues? You've already voted on these recommendations by the financial board.
We haven't voted on them. They're in the final budget, that's one we're voting on. You want to vote on them simply?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I thought we should probably go ahead and vote on these today.
As chairman of the finance committee, you have the right to call for votes. So, do you have a motion?
Still moving with the documents you have in front of you, 2007 and '08 budget, finance committee recommendations.
Those are the two sheets that are inter-handed, correct?
That's correct.
So they're voting on these in one lump sum?
Yes.
Or one by one?
The whole thing.
Okay.
All those favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no.
No.
Six to one in favor of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, may we want to get the timeline, we're working against time.
The scheduled adoption would be at the June 18th meeting. The ordinances, ordinance for this budget will go out to you on the Friday, in the Friday mailing prior to the board meeting on the 18th, instead of in your package that you will get on Wednesday.
Can we have a budget ordinance before the public hearing is scheduled?
You will have it on Friday before the public hearing on Monday, I mean, for the adoption on Monday. There is no more public hearings scheduled.
Are we scheduled on for June 18?
Not a public hearing. There's a fire district rate or rate, public hearing, excuse me. That's the public hearing on the 18th, is for the fire district rates, because you've not heard open that up to public comment yet. But there is no additional hearing scheduled on the regular budget, general fund budget, or this budget.
We're required to have a public hearing to consider the rates that are set for each fire district. And that will be in reference to their budgets. And we've already approved it.
So this board just now approved this budget?
They approved the, excuse me, you approved the adjustments to the budget. You will make approval of the actual budget ordinance on the 18th.
We didn't vote on the whole budget, we just voted on what we were handed.
The adjustments that have to be made to it, and on the 18th, you will adopt your budget. So we'll be able to present one by one first.
You have a question? Your motion, we adjourn, I believe we already had one on the floor. A little thing, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, no. Unanimous. Appreciate you.
Fun starts in the parks. Lee County Parks and Recreation is your starting place for recreation and events, youth and adults alike. Call or log on to leecountync.gov. Lee County Parks and Recreation, committed today for a better tomorrow.